That's a good, yeah. That's your butt.
It's about the same.
Well, it's gonna be accurate for this though, because you won't do it publicly.
Oh, I will. I'm scared.
See her coming over the rail?
Yes.
All I gotta do is tell Will to walk outside for a minute.
Yeah.
Alright, I've called this meeting of the Young County Commissioners Court to order. Let the records show, it is nine thirty-one AM. All five members of the court are present. If you're watching on the YouTube channel, feel free to call in, uh, nine four zero two two one two one oh seven. If you're able, please stand for invocations. Pleasure that Mr. Shook has the honors.
Let's pray. Gracious heavenly Father, we just thank you for another beautiful day. Lord, we just, uh, ask that you forgive us where we fall short. Lord, we thank you for your many blessings. Lord, we thank you for the rain. We thank you for the cooler temperatures. Lord, we thank you for, for our health and our happiness, Lord. And when we prayed today, that would be, uh, decisions we'd make would be, be good decisions to help the citizens of the county. Lord, to be the best place in Young, in Texas. And, and Father, we just, uh, we just thank you for the opportunity to be here today, Lord. We just ask you to be with us, uh, as we go through this day. We just ask all these things in your gracious holy name. Amen.
Allegedly, please.
To the Father of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which he stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and infinite, and ever and ever. On honor to Texas flag, allegedly, and just to the meaning Texas, one state, under God, one one, and indivisible.
Alright, we'll move to item number three, public comments. Any public comments? We'll move to acknowledge the Texas Indigent Defense Commission's fiscal year twenty-five formula grant statement of grant award for Young County. It comes out to be twenty-three thousand, five hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Uh, I didn't do the math on that, but throughout the state, it comes down to be about nine percent is what the state reimburses us for, for indigent defense. So, that puts, Texas-wide, it's ninety-one percent of that falls onto the counties. Item number four, approve the amended county clerk minutes from a previous meeting, which was August eighteenth. Um, I think we've still got two things that need to be corrected on that. And they're both in item number nine. So I think we need a space between Wiley and two, to make that two different words. And the way that motion should read is says, "Motion made by Commissioner Jimmy Wiley to accept all winning bids on Gov. Dea- Gov. Deals." Period. Anyone else see anything on that one? Every, all the other corrections were put in there perfectly.
With the new, new changes, I might get a motion that we accept those.
Alright, we have a motion from Commissioner Cresswell. Do we have a second?
Sure.
Second from Commissioner Wiley. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. So we'll get those fixed up. Alright, let's move to item number five, review and discuss, um, review, review, discuss, approve county clerk minutes from August twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five. Um, I've got some comments on this one too. Let me give you my comments, and then y'all can give me your comments. On item number four, it says, "Motion by County Judge, Judge Brown." I think because this is our, our budget, I think we need to put that full motion in there, because it's a pretty detailed motion. And it was, it's on the front of, uh, like we can read the, the budget package. It's that those, those motions are written out. And I, I just, I just think we need to copy that full motion. Because it's, uh, there's a lot of things that's required by law to have in that motion. And then on the item number five, the title should be ratification of tax increase and adoption of tax rate. And then again, we need the full motion on that. Item number six, at the very bottom, that last, um, or on, the last bullet point on the first page, there is another bullet point on the second page. It should be announcement of unclaimed property capital credits, period. And then I need a sentence that says, "Awarded to Young County," uh, wait, I'm sorry. Let me say that again. Announcement of unclaimed property capital credits awarded to Young County, period. And then another sentence that says, "The comptroller authorized the release of sixty percent," which is the nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars and eight cents. So I put those in brackets. Of the total amount available to Young County. We're actually getting more than nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars. They just, that, the nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars is just the sixty percent that they've released to us now. The other forty percent goes later. Working down to number eleven, ratification of, I think we ought to put what that is, Motor Vehicle Crime Prevention Authority Resolution. Item number twelve, um, motion by Commissioner Craig to approve the memorandum of agreement and to contribute forty-seven thousand, five hundred to Helen Farabee in fiscal year twenty-twenty-six. Thirteen's kind of a big one. So the book, the agenda item was renewal of the Thompson, Thompson Order Subscription Service. But we didn't do that. We approved the next Lexus Nexus. So I think a motion by Commissioner, or then I think, before we do the motion, I think we need to have a sentence that says, "District Attorney elected to use Lexus Nexus over Thompson Reuters and presented a contract." Then we can say, "Motion by Commissioner Wiley, second." And, and then I think, I think because it's confusing, because we, we came into the meeting talking about Thompson Reuters, but we ended up approving Lexus Nexus, we ought to say, "Motion by Commissioner Wiley to approve a contract with Lexus Nexus," just to, to make that crystal clear. Item number fourteen, opening of sealed bids. I think we need to say, "For the construction of a new gazebo courthouse gazebo." And then where it's no action taken, I think we need to acknowledge that four bids were opened, but no bids, no action was taken. And that's all I had. Anyone else have any other comments?
The only thing was on that one, no action was taken. I started to do it to where we were refused all bids. But, uh, then we changed it to no action taken for the purpose of our architect to come in.
Yeah.
That would have been the only difference, I think.
Well, you feel strongly on that? You wanna make, you wanna change it?
I just don't agree with the price. I saw it, but it.
Well, I know, but we didn't, we didn't reject the bids.
No.
We haven't rejected the bids. We just, we opened four bids, and then we just elected not to, we called timeout, no action taken.
But that's the only difference, I think, in what I've changed.
Okay. Any other comments to the minutes? Or do we have a motion to approve the minutes with what changes made? Okay, Commissioner Craig has made a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Cresswell. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Item number six, consider the treasurer's financial report and updates on securities pledge. Treasur mile?
Uh, no.
Okay. Item number seven, consider the auditor's budget amendments and vouchers payable. Ms. Roberts?
I know. You never disappoint. Oh, yeah, that's true. Uh, on the vouchers, we have, the total is two hundred and sixty-six thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty percent. And out of the general fund is one hundred and ninety-one thousand, eight hundred and nineteen dollars and thirteen cents. And there is gone a few too.
So, here we have a motion for Commissioner Cresswell. Do we have a second? Second from Commissioner Shook. Is there any discussion on the item or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes four zero one with Commissioner Wiley abstaining.
So I have budget amendments. I said with, uh, Commissioner Craig on Friday, we worked up some amendments to move his money around within his budget. And we may have a few more reports over to work on the overtime that y'all discussed earlier. We're gonna get those checked.
Okay. Is this what it is?
Yes, sir. They're all within his budget.
Okay. So the, uh, amendment to the budget is three thousand dollars from tires and equipment, two equipment repair, thirteen dollars from tires and tubes to drug testing, nine hundred from tires and tubes to telephone, two thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine from road materials to education, one thousand, nine hundred and sixty from road materials to utilities, three thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven from road materials to miscellaneous, five thousand, three hundred and fifty-four from road materials to equipment maintenance. Are you gonna make a motion to accept this? Um, do we have a second? We have a second from Commissioner Cresswell. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Alright, item number eight, discussing, consider employee bonds. We have a five thousand dollar bond from Randy Phillips, Deputy Tax Collector. And we have a five thousand dollar bond for Sarah K. Riley, Deputy Clerk, Justice of Peace, Precedent one. We have a motion for Commissioner Wiley and a second for Commissioner Cresswell. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Item nine, discuss and consider the Tapadara's Energy Project Environmental Anal- Analysis Report. We got the environmental report. It is a whopping, this, this is front back. This is a whopping, I don't know, a hundred and?
Hundred and sixty-one.
Two hundred and sixty-one pages. I, uh, say we submit this into public record. I would ask, just give them a day or two to get a stamp, because they've got a stamp of each page. But then it'll be available in like a copy or scan, or whatever you want with it. I've started reading it. It is, I haven't finished reading it. There's a lot in here. But, um, I don't really have any other fe- any other feedback on it, except that they, they finally did give it to us.
I might have a motion to accept that in public record.
Yeah, well, let me do that. Take a motion to accept it in public record. We have a second from Commissioner Craig. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero.
Yes, sir.
Judge, can I ask you a question?
Uh-huh.
The people that did this report, were they anyway connected to Titus?
I don't believe so. I think they were hired consultants to do it. I think it's, you know, if there are firms that do this, I think they just hired a consulting firm. So this is what I believe to happen, that believed happened. I don't think they're affiliated.
Did, in the discussion about this report, uh, did they ever say when this was started, when this report was initiated? According to what I've read, EPA, uh, almost, that they suggest that it takes a full year cycle of like migratory birds and observation of different species to make a complete report.
I don't, I don't, I don't know the answer of when they started. I, I.
Can you ask them that question?
Well, I think we ought to read the report first and see if it's in the report, and then, then we can ask our questions. I, I'm sure there's gonna be a lot of questions that she will have. So let's, let's just, let's get all our questions into one thing, and we can get them asked.
So that's the next steps that, once it makes public record, we can all get a copy, read it, and then there will be an agenda item on a poll already for those questions to be submitted?
Well, I would, I would say if you have questions, I would, in the open, in the, in the public comments, you can say, if we have some questions, if you want to present me with a list of questions, I'm, I'm happy to send it to you.
Okay. But as the, the court has an action item, do y'all have an action item that y'all will be reviewing it and getting back with yourself?
The environmental, the environmental report is not for us. That's for the state. The state, uh, whatever the state environmental, it's, the environmental report is not for the county. It's for the state.
But if there was an item in the environmental report that was alarming for the county?
We can bring anything up, yeah. We totally can bring anything up.
Okay.
Your questions, you can ask.
Same question? So, yeah, so if y'all have, I mean, after y'all get a chance to read it and digest it, uh, like you did before, I make up a list of questions, and I'm happy to submit those.
You say it's for the state that it, then the county, I mean, shouldn't the county be concerned?
Well, the county, I guess, I can't.
Of, of the environment that it's gonna affect?
But we don't have a environmental agency that, that monitors all this stuff. We just don't have that. But that's, the state has that.
I know. You guys represent us in the county, and that part of the county is being bladed off twenty-two hundred acres. I mean, that, that should be concerning about how it's gonna affect that part of the county.
We don't, a lot of people blade off big tracts of land and put in grass fields. I mean, that's a pretty common occurrence here in Young County.
Grass fields is a lot different than twenty-two hundred acres of grass.
Yeah. But that's, I mean, there, there's a state agency that monitors all that. We don't have the experts. We don't have engineers. We don't have biologists. We don't have those. That's not a, that's not something we have here in Young County.
In other words, it's not your concern?
I wouldn't say that. I'm saying all right, that's all I can. I, I, I do put my, I do put faith in, in the state of Texas to, to monitor that.
So the state agency, this report has been submitted to them?
I, I would assume, but I don't know that for a fact.
Okay. Is there any documentation of where or if it's been?
They just, they just sent me a copy of it. I asked for a copy of it, they sent me a copy of it. What they have done with this report, I don't know.
Can you tell us anything else about the status of this proposed file?
I have not spoken to them in quite a while. I've spoken to our consultant, and I know he is talking to them. And, um, they've had a lot of conversations as far as the details of it. I think we're gonna have a meeting soon to kind of get, kind of the thoughts between what our consultant, the conversations between our consultant and them. But I'm letting kind of our consultant do his work, and then when he's, at some point, we're gonna sit down, have a, have a deep briefing. But we've not got that yet.
Would you guys be receptive to, uh, attending and have Titus attend a town hall somewhere in the area of Eliasville?
Well, we will have to have a town hall at some point. If we were going to go forward with anything, we have to have a public hearing. So there will be a town hall. There absolutely will be. If, if the county's gonna do anything, as far as a town hall, I can't make them have a town hall.
Well, I know that.
But I can, we can have a public hearing if we were going to do anything as a, as a court. And we would, we would have to do that.
So on the public hearing, that would, that location would be here, is that correct?
That would be here, yes.
And would, can you follow up with the vote on the same day as the public hearing?
You can. You can.
Is the consultant, would he review the environmental report? And if he saw something alarming that the county would need to potentially take action, such as drainage runoff, to require Titus to do something to prevent drainage runoff, or do testing of water or something? Is a consultant, is, is that within his duties to do something like that?
He is not an engineer, he's not an engineer biologist. That, that's, that's not his expertise either.
Does a consultant direct anything from, uh, to, to the company of any consent from the public, or what's the avenue for that?
Well, the avenue is, in the, in the public hearing section, y'all, y'all raise your concerns. And in the past, uh, I've forwarded questions that y'all add to them to get answers. And so that, that's, that's the way for the, the public, the, the public, the public comment section of the meeting is, is, goes up to that.
And as a, um, they did not reply to that last set of questions. There's, there's been, there's been two sets of questions in the last set that did, at least mine, not only did I receive answers.
Okay. Well, we've been recent, if, if we're putting together questions, let's, let's recite them with these, with this next round of questions, and we can put them on there again.
Okay.
So, um, this thing's moving at a snail's pace. We're not rushing anything, so we've got time to ask it again.
Is it possible that the location of, when we all get together to, as a community, to not have it just here? I mean, there are lots of folks out there that are not gonna be able to come in, that want to voice their opinion. Could we have it, say, at the church in Eliasville? Could we have it more convenient?
I believe we'd have to have it here.
Could we have it more convenient to the community that's out there? We don't have a school, but we do have a church. And Eliasville, I think more people in that part of the county would show up at the church in Eliasville rather than come all the way here, because they're just.
I don't know if we, I don't know if we can have a public hearing like that.
Well, maybe we could do it in two steps, where you do a town hall meeting in the local area, and you as commissioners and county judge attend to hear the public. And then you follow up with the appropriate place, and the people who can attend again, or additional people who can attend at that time. So you have basically two, two locations, two, two meetings to make sure that the people are.
Okay. Something, something to think about. Anything else? Alright. Let's move to item number ten, discuss and consider input regarding gazebo construction from Justin Gilmore, Level Five. I didn't even notice you come in. There you go. How you doing, Justin?
Doing well, it's more, uh, we just think y'all.
I'm in the back.
I did, I sunk in. I apologize for a little bit late here. We took the three bid proposals a couple of weeks ago at Commissioner's Board. And all we did was just open them, uh, read them aloud, so everybody had an understanding of where the pricing was. Uh, at that point, I've taken those bids and the proposals to kind of evaluate, uh, all the three different proposals that we've received. And just reading those, that through those real quick, J C Contractors, um, had turned in a bid proposal, two hundred and forty-eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars. Uh, he did provide a bid bond, a little confusion there, but there was a bid bond associated with that. It was not on the exact form, the bid form that we could specify in there. Uh, and the reason we specify that is to give us information to kind of compare apples, meaning schedule. Uh, also, the coupla. Uh, so looking at their actual bid proposal, we don't know how long it's gonna take them to construct that facility, uh, which is one of our evaluations. And then also, there was no coupla, that's an alternate bid. Um, in speaking with J C Construction, uh, it's gonna take them, I think, I believe it was right in line with everyone else's proposal, uh, it was around ninety, or a hundred and twenty days, a hundred and ten days, I believe is what this is, um, for completion on that. The coupla was actually included in that entire price of two hundred and forty-eight thousand, one twenty-five. There was no actual alternate for that. Um, and I did not request from him actually what that price would be, or move it back out, just because of their, their bid proposal was so high. Um, the next bid was actually called, a company called Next Build, uh, G C's, and they're actually out of Lubbock. Their original bid price was of one hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. And they had an alternate in there for a coupla, uh, fifteen thousand dollars. They also submitted a revised alternate for a coupla of sixty-two hundred dollars. Um, so they were able to actually find a product out there. The one that we specified was fifteen thousand. They found another one on the coupla of sixty-two hundred dollars. Uh, I reviewed it, and the product that they sent over, I don't see any issues with it. Uh, it's, I think it's gonna be just fine if you wanted to go that route on their bid proposal. The third bid proposal was sent in with solely contracting services, uh, two hundred and eighty-two thousand, two hundred and seven dollars. Uh, and again, their alternate bid was, uh, fifteen thousand, three hundred and twenty-six dollars for that coupla. So looking at all three of these proposals, um, you know, obviously, there's, there's quite a difference in range there. Uh, I think some of them, talking to solely contractors, they're a lot larger of companies, or as you know, contracting firm goes. They are out of, uh, just east of here a little bit. And, um, looking at them, they have a lot of overhead in their project. They're basically gonna man the project with a full-time person out here, with a hundred and twenty days that they have in the proposal. Uh, it's a very simple structure. It shouldn't take that long or that much manpower just to oversight and oversee that. So my, my general opinion of that is that that's, that's kind of some of the overhead that they're looking at there. Uh, again, it's a larger company, um, in order for them to do the project and make money on which poor old business to do, that's what their price was. And I fully get that. Um, J C Contractors, again, talking with them, they are a local contractor here in Ram. They can man the project, they're giving a hundred and ten days to do the facility for, design, build a facility. Uh, again, not, not sure what the alternate proposal would be, but I'm guessing it would be around fifteen thousand, which would be better to, or to pull out of that, if you wanted to go that route. Uh, but given the fact that Next Build G C's was the lowest bid of one hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, I actually did a lot, had a lot of discussions with Next Build to say, okay, the little, we don't have that kind of budget. Uh, that's not really where our budget needs to be on this project. It can be less than that. What can we do? Uh, so I've been in just nearly discussions with Next Build. They have submitted a revised proposal, uh, not, no change in materials, no change in constructability, no change in anything other than just getting some value engineering done, some, maybe switching out some electricians or different partners that are on the project, some consultants are on the project with them. And they have submitted a revised proposal, one hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars, um, for the project, the construction.
Is that with a coupla?
That is not with a coupla, no. So that is their base bid. Now, remember, they gave two options with a coupla of fifteen thousand dollars, which was specified, but they also have an alternate of sixty-two hundred dollars for that revised coupla. Which again, I'm fully fine with that product. So if you wanted to look at that under their bid scope, uh, that sixty-two hundred dollars would be the price. Um, so again, just working with them throughout this, I actually got an email back from, from Next Build this morning, offering up more savings on the project. And I apologize, I don't, I didn't have time to read it or review it just yet, but I don't know that it's on work presenting. But if we wanted to look at those options, we can do that under some contract negotiations. The price that was submitted was about five thousand dollars lower than this. Uh, it was merely, in perfect email, it was just changing out some hand railing. Um, the, the guardrails around the perimeter of the gazebo that we have specified in there, they are painted steel. Again, it's part of its long-term durability. But instead of having vertical pickets, turning up the horizontal pickets. I'm not sure how that, I guess it saves a little bit more material, but, um, that obviously saves a little bit more on the cost of the woods, so. So based on this, these three proposals, uh, again, the one from Next Build, their, their base bid was close, but not quite where our budget needed to be on the project. I'm working with them. I feel like I've gotten it back down to where our budget should have been on this project. Uh, my original estimate was between one fifty, one seventy-five, in that range. And I think Next Build can not only handle the project, but has the right to price, proposal price to be. Just wanted to come present these to you and make some suggestions and recommendations. If you answer any questions.
Do we need a gazebo?
No. I'll, I'll group it up.
I'll, I'll agree with you, I'll probably complain for this present, though.
Did get back to our budget, but going through this exercise, I'm like, how often does it use?
Have they been remarried there, Mo?
I had two, two gazebo away.
I would say it's not worth to redevelop for two weeks.
Well, it's used more than that.
Well, I know it's used more than that, they take cash and pictures on it. But here's the deal, I don't think the community won't spend that kind of money on something like that.
The other thing I do want to make sure that we're aware of is construction materials testing. We do forward that, I'm estimating that I think it's still $2,500. We need a concrete slab, we need to test a concrete slab. It's all solid steel structure, so I want to have a third-party picture of welds and everything on the steel structure are according to what the engineer specifications are. So that would be an additional cost.
Thanks, Ryan.
We're accounting for if we decide, if we decide.
Well, I'm looking at gazebo before there, the gazebo for Ossis, of its conception, I would say. Even the old pictures, there's pictures of one right there.
It was on the others, it was over there, yeah, it got moved.
From the beginning, and then this new construction in early age, wood construction. But this year will be designed where you last, not over the wood construction. And if you drive through many of the counties, they have gazebo's or something.
No, I mean, I, I see the pros, I mean, there's pros and cons, there's.
I just don't think it's an important factor that we have with a gazebo on the border of Long, if not for these prices anyways.
Is this, is steel prices being affected by tariff pricing?
They are a little bit, I'd say that's their most volatile right now, but it's not. I think on this project, that's such a minimal piece of it. I think overall, out of the $152,000 total steel package, including handrails and everything, right around $45,000, so.
So it's not like there's expectation that this could go down, you know?
I don't think so. I don't, I'm in such a small project, I don't think it's going to fluctuate enough for us to make huge difference. I think the longer you wait, the more, the more labor costs are going to go up. Which is really, I think, to me, right now, the portion of construction industry, the labor costs is what's affecting so much of our price.
I would say we need to get back to the end again, and see what their, what they had on.
Okay.
Yeah.
Maybe get a little more input from the public, how they feel spending this much money.
Yeah.
I, I agree with you, you know, that's what has been there. Do, do we really want, you know, the tax burden of funding that much money?
When we, when we lower it, it was, what a big talk, you know?
But it's not, but it's not real quiet, it's, it's.
I'm just saying, we're going to rebuild.
Why don't we, why don't you see if you can hammer it down, see if we can get some more room, and then the five of us can try to gather some, because gazebo was something that, that, that everybody wants.
I mean, we're requiring a bond on this, and that's a big factor, and part of the manufacturing of it too. And a lot of local people can't touch it because of that bond issue.
That's, that's correct, you know, anytime you get, say, they raised it to $75,000. But anytime you're over that, you've got to have a bond, a bid bond and a performance bond. On a project of this size, I think you're looking at about three to four percent of the overall cost is just strictly in bid bond, which is very much money.
Not to, some of it's already got it set up. If you talk to them, they don't, they're not going to touch it for that. So it, it gives them, it takes a whole factor of people that could do the construction out because of the bond issue. I mean, we can't change that, but it does take one away.
Anything over, I believe it's $75,000, you can patch it. Yeah, I mean, yeah, to actually get the ability to bond a project, you have to have all your money able to do by a third-party CPA company. There's, there's a lot of process involved with, on the, just the business side, to be able to bond. And then the bond is the three to four percent of the cost itself. So, yeah, I, I agree, it takes a lot of people out of that game to be able to do this type of project, which is, you know, like, it's solely construction, I think, they're a great company, I've heard of them quite a bit. They do a lot of bigger projects, bond bigger projects, you know.
Okay, so we tabled this, let Justin see if he can work some magic on it, let the rest of us try to figure out what, what the, yeah.
I can continue working with Next Build if that's what the court.
They're the only ones working, dealing.
I agree with you on that. The one thing I will say is J.C. Construction, J.C. Contractors, being a local contractor here, just due to timing, they're able to bond the project, but they submitted a cashier's check as part of their bid bond, because it just could be the bid bond paperwork involved. Cashier's check is, obviously, you put up the cash and it's just sitting being held by the escrow team. If we don't have an intention moving forward with them, and if the court, in which to release that cashier's check back to J.C. Contractors, let them go on about their business, and continue working with Next Build.
I think that's the, yeah.
Do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, let's make a motion.
I'd like a motion, we'll go ahead and release that to them.
Second, second for Commissioner Wiley. All in favor? Any opposed? Five votes, great, all right.
I'll get you some information back.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Justin, before you move on, did you take an opinion from the public?
Yeah.
I agree with Mr. Criscle that at this point in time, the sewer rate is going up, water rate's going up, not only for the city, but the county also, then we don't need a rezign.
All right, we got a first, no vote, or no, no.
Or open it up for donations from the public? Open it up for, if the public wants it, donations, I mean, they give, somebody sponsor it.
All right, item number 11, discuss and consider approved block safety contract. Lieutenant Will Hoffman.
Morning.
How are you? Oh, oh, can we get some time out? And we will skip to item number 10. 10 a.m., open review and consider Youngfield's auction results for End Dump Trailer.
The last thirty minutes of it, they're bidding on it.
For real?
Yeah. See, I think Friday, what did I have, like?
Hundred dollars.
Hundred dollars. Ending bid is $2,525.
You're asking what, you're going to refuse that deal?
No, I'm not.
Does that get that?
Fell out of Oklahoma.
How many bets you got?
Well, it's, since it's an auction, I mean, there were three different individuals asking questions on it, so I took all of them on it.
All right, do we have a motion to accept a bid for $2,525?
Yes, sir.
And we have a second from Commissioner Craig, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The End Dump Trailer is gone.
Where's that?
All right, Lieutenant, sorry about that.
You should have a copy of the contract, if you're any of you. Twelve of the contracts, block.
So a couple things, I just want to, I just want to note, like, service fees, like, what could cause service fees is relocated post-approved locations. So just make sure we get our locations right for the first half. The other thing is, we're going to have to, to do this, we're going to probably have to get an agreement with Tech Dot.
Yes, sir.
I've talked to Zach, I've kind of seen what a, what a contract in other counties looks like. But at some point, you'll need to give, we'll need to get with Zach, use him and get him a list of locations so that he can.
Block has already started the process.
They've started it, okay.
They filed for a permit, it's a technical contract.
So the city's taken this down, sorry, the city's taken this down, what you're asking?
No, no, they partnered with us. So they were, they were looking, they were looking at doing their own, their own block program. And then the sheriff's office went to them and said, hey, we're looking at it too, let's just partner on it. And so they dropped their own proprietary contract and they're partnering with us on our contract.
But sure, it do have come across.
It wasn't, it wasn't written very well, it was really, I.
I think it was confusion. So we, we started this process in December of 2024. We're in the city, kind of, we had a quick little contracts, they weren't going through a grant, there was some purchase cameras, out of their budget, and then realized, well, you know, cash is going to grant, it's going to save us a lot of money, just your access, it's just, we just made.
Yeah.
Fresh across.
Or approve the sort of the grant of that, where we.
We, yeah, we, we basically approved the camera system because we accepted the grant. We, now, we're, now, well, we've accepted the grant, now we're accepting, now we're reviewing and accepting a contract for block. But the contract basically ties into that grant, it's, the contract is written based off the acceptance of using, using that grant money. So the nice thing about it is, I mean, there's no tax money, from, at least from the county side, there's no tax money from our side that's going into it. We're getting the grant money for eighty percent of it, and then we're going to use Senate Bill 22, the remaining, our share of the remaining twenty percent. They have a twenty, right?
Sure.
Remember that rating? So do we have a motion to accept this contract? And I believe our resolution allows you to sign that contract. Didn't we do a resolution last time about the sheriff's office fixing it done?
Yes, sir, I would just ask that, you know, the county judge would also sign it.
Yeah.
It was one of those.
I mean, they're signing, it's a signed below you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that. Oh, we have a motion to accept the contract, we have a second?
Sure.
Second for Commissioner Craig, is there any discussion on the sign?
What's the, what's the total on the final, I mean, we're not using county money, but if, like, Kansas Senate 22, where we're going to be left with twenty percent of that.
Again, there, yeah, so we only have Senate Bill 22 for ten years.
Right.
So, and then we also, we'll have to apply for the, the big grant every year, correct?
For any city.
Yes. And then we have the ability, if we don't get the grant money, we have the ability to end this arrangement.
Okay.
So we have, we have, if we were ever to not get, we're going to just keep applying to these grants, if we didn't get these grants, then we have the option to step away from them. And, you know, let's say we did want to step away from it, we would have the option to renegotiate the contract. So we're not, we're not locked in to anything. Or we're locked in for a year, but we have grant monies to cover all that.
But Senate Bill 22 goes away, that's money that we, we won't be able to be done through.
We will, we will have, yeah, if Senate Bill 22 goes away, that's, that's going to be a reason for us to sit and re-discuss this. But we know we have Senate Bill 22 for two years.
I think we'll see how this thing works, we will work.
Yeah, I, I've talked to several county judges around that have this, and they all say that it has dramatically improved their recovery of some vehicles, and they, they, they see a lot of things.
If you figure the cost, what this is short right here, if you look at two days, so, would that figure?
Yeah. Don't take vacation.
Don't take vacation, don't call and see.
Why is everyone looking at that?
The maximum is six hundred and fifty-five years.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Execute it, and I'll sign it, and then we'll leave, give that to Tina.
All the tank plate traffic came, we all send it, we all play it for one two five, I don't care.
They, they, they.
And these, all the silver, silver concrete.
Yes, sir.
Then if it becomes a bargain, take it there, we can renegotiate it. How is that coming about Jack County? I know it's been slow with Jack County.
In the system, and then you can get it back and send it in.
I know it's been slow with Kansas, with Jack County.
Well, it's, so the part that's been slow is Tech Dot, the department. Jack County has actually had a little, a little state of the month. The Tech Dot, up until, uh, last week, that was the first time they were, at the time, state of Texas, for six months. So that was the, it was just the next time they.
Correct. Oh, one thing, just maybe easier, is just make a copy of that signature page, and just give Tina a copy of the signature page, and you can keep the original, and then we can send that to you instead of having to, give her the whole thing. All right, thanks, Will. Uh, switch to item number 12, discuss and consider a fire suppression emergency service contract between Young County Rule Fire Departments in Young County for fiscal year 2026. So this is, this is a deal that we get, we do every year with our, with our volunteer fire departments. They've updated $160,000, this is what we budgeted to give to our, to our volunteer fire departments. It has been executed by the chiefs of all of our, yep, everyone has executed this. And they, they need to have this contract so that they can apply for grants. So that's, that's the important reason for us documenting this each year. So do we have a motion to approve our service contract between Young County and our Rule B F D? We have a motion for Commissioner Shook and a second for Commissioner Wiley. Any discussion on the matter? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero.
I want to say that the state has offered what is $167,000, $167,000.
I know that they have a, they, they're, we're going to get a distribution from the state. I don't know what that means for us as far as how much we're going to get, but the state has allocated plenty of that.
Guard's person is in.
Yeah.
Yes.
While they're, while y'all are signing that, let's move to item number 13, discuss and consider canceling September 2nd meeting, the September 15th meeting, and the September 29th meeting from the order setting the day and week of regular term of Commissioner's Court meeting. As just, as a re. As, just, as a recap, what we, what we have done in the past is, we set a regular term court meeting for the second and fourth Monday of each month. With the exception of June, July, wait, June, July, August, and September, we set it every week during budget season. But our goal is always to finish our budget by the end of August. And so what this is doing is canceling those extra meetings in September that we don't need, that we don't need anymore. Do we have a motion to catch, to, to cancel the budget, the budget meetings? We have a motion for Commissioner Craig and a second from Commissioner Wiley. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. All right, that, this is a slated item, so this is item number fourteen, discuss and consider setting the day of the week regular term of Commissioner's court meeting for fiscal year two thousand twenty-six. The way we, I worded this was that we were setting our meeting up for the second and fourth Monday of each month, and every Monday in the months of June, July, August, and September, except for July sixth, in observance of the July fourth holiday. Do we have a motion to approve these dates as our regular meetings going forward for the next fiscal year? Motion for Commissioner Wiley, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Shook, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yeah.
Motion passes five zero. All right, item number fifteen, discuss and consider Air Med Care Network Group Full, Full Census Membership for Young County Agreement for Air Ambulance. This is a six thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollar item.
Yeah, so we put, we have a census about eighty-nine because some employees already have it, their wives have it, they have it on, so we don't put it on here again, but we did carry this one and the other care platform on all of those.
So, is it for the employees and their wives, or just the employees?
Uh, they can add their, and their spouses, but they don't, that, we just pay them.
I got you, got you. So, we, we have a motion for Commissioner Wiley, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second for Commissioner Crestwell, is there any discussion on this?
Those covers are like my child. That's him.
I think you had, I don't know, did you put them on there?
I don't know, I have to go back and read.
With March and say.
We're not seeing how good they act.
I, she could have that.
It may cover houses.
You're gonna find helicopter, she could go in the, the covered wagon?
Yeah.
Okay.
It may cover houses, is one of those.
Yeah, I think I pulled out one of them all by, like, so, lighter.
All right. No? Do we go on that? I don't know, did we do, let's, let's start over, do we have a motion?
Yes.
Motion for Commissioner Wiley, who did the second?
He did the thought.
I'm about to go.
Thought eighty-seven, um, Gibbs got the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero.
So, there's initials on every page, the second page is a signature. Tina has that, I would thank you.
Okay, we're good on that.
You should fill it out for me.
I was like, apparently.
I don't have a picture.
Ask coffee.
All right, uh, what do you want me to do with this, give this to Tina, put in the records, Cheryl?
I don't know.
Uh, yes, she can, and I'll, yeah, I'll just.
Would you feel sorry?
Just asking.
Okay, item number sixteen, discuss and consider renewal of the inter-local agreement for the nine-one-one public safety answering point service between Nortex Regional Plan Commission in Young County. This is a contract that we do every one to two years with Nortex. Basically, they apply for grants, they get the nine-one-ones, safety equipment, um, I think we're part of a nine-county partnership that, that works on this. There are two counties, Will Barker and Lynnshaw County, has left Nortex, and they do their own. So, they're separate from the rest of us, but, um, this is something we do every year. Do we have a, a motion to renew our inter-local agreement with Nortex regarding nine-one-one? Motion for Commissioner Wiley? We have a second for Commissioner Crestwell, is there any discussion on this matter? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Oh, well, yeah, you're right, Will. No, 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 no. That's, this signature page is a, is a, is a attachment. Hey, Timmy, do you have the second contract, or do you have both of them?
Here, here it is. Another, just the rest of that.
Okay.
What pass, fix, play for him?
Okay, item number seventeen. Discuss and consider a tax resale deal, fee for parcel eight-eight-seven-eight for the winning bidder, Maxine Exalus, it's a great last name, for five thousand and seventy dollars in Alney, Texas, from the Texas Communities Group. This is, um, this is a tax sale for four oh seven West Grove Street in Alney. Do we have a motion to approve the, uh, the sale?
Motion.
We have a motion from Commissioner Craig, do we have a second? We have a second from Commissioner Wiley, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five oh. Right, item eighteen, discuss and consider a memorandum of understanding between Helen Fairby Center subcontract, subcontracting with Abilene Recovery Council and Young County providing intervention in treatment and recovery programs. So, the last contract we had with these guys was in two thousand twenty. I personally have never heard of them. I tried to call down, I could not get anyone on the phone, um, I got voicemails and stuff. I am of the opinion that we should table this, I'd like to understand a little better what this memorandum of understanding is. In theory, we've had a relationship with them since I've started doing this, and I've never heard of them. Um, I think what I read about them, it sounds great.
Was this part of that, uh, oh, the act, uh, where the length, uh, and, like, what was it called now? Where we were required for mental health to have that outside help? I'm asking Jimmy, 'cause he's the only one that was here to remember it.
It may have been one of those deals that.
Sander Bland Act, part of that?
It may have been. Cause, there, there, there's one of those deals, you're a whole man, but I don't, I don't know about that.
That would be the only question I'd have, is if it's part of that, would we have to do that for the state? And it was the Sander Bland Act, wouldn't it, Jimmy?
Yeah, I just wanted to talk about that.
It was something like that, I don't recall.
Well, I'm constantly having people asking for substance abuse help, and I'd love to have a place to refer them to. I just, I'm personally not comfortable signing this without, I just want to know who they are and what they can do for us, and are they the right fit?
But I can't remember if that's where that kind of been at, at two thousand twenty.
I mean, I, I.
But this is part of Helen Fairby Center.
I, I feel like they're legit.
Yes.
I just feel like I should have heard of them by now, right? I mean, if they're, if they're our substance abuse partner, you think they would have reached out? I, I, I had no idea that this was even an option for us, so I would like to table this and, um, hopefully get someone on the phone who can kinda tell me about it.
If I talk to, uh, the chairman and see if these, usually these people who.
Good point.
Are through the computer, he may be used.
It might be, what it might be is, is we contact Helen Fairby, and maybe Helen Fairby contacts them?
Yes.
Maybe, I, I mean, I'm just guessing.
Or they're sending them through Helen Fairby and, uh.
Has, has this memorandum of understanding is entered into Helen Fairby Center subcontracting with Abilene Recovery Council in Young County?
Yeah, I just, I just think it's weird that I'm signing, that they're asking me to sign something that I don't know who they are. And I tried last week to get in touch with them, and I couldn't, anyone.
Would you like to motion to table this for them?
I don't think we need a motion for it, but I'd just say we table it.
Okay, I agree.
Yeah, all right, so we'll, we'll table that, hopefully I, I can, hopefully I get a good report from them, put this on the agenda for.
Reach out to our local, it might be more, they may have, reach out to our local place here, they may have a contact for you there.
They, they might, yeah, though I, um, that, I have a contact, it's in the contract, and I have phone number, I mean, I, I, I've spoken to people at the place, but not someone who.
Knows what's going on.
Yeah, I got reception, I got a receptionist, you know, I didn't get, did he change email? Is it wrong? I mean. Oh, yeah, I saw that, I saw that.
I guess Wichita Hall, you, too. Is there the mobile? Uh, I believe.
Oh. Well, yeah, I mean, another thing, do they have a place in Wichita Halls? Cause it's much more convenient to go to Wichita Halls than it is to go to Abilene.
I think they'll be doing this by.
Taking forty miles.
How many year old, uh?
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know.
It's not clear.
I've been here long enough that I think it's weird that I hadn't heard of them, if they're supposed to work, I mean, not just to me, it's weird. All right. Item number, okay, so we tabled eighteen. I don't, I don't remember nineteen, ratify the agreement with Lexus Nexus for the District Attorney's Office. Y'all remember last week, um, they thought they were gonna go with Reuters Thompson, but Reuters, what?
Thompson.
Reuters, Thompson Reuters, and, um, Dee changed her mind, she wanted to continue with Lexus Nexus. We approved it last meeting, so I executed the agreement, I just would like to run it through Commissioner's Court and to ratify the executed agreement between Young County, between the Ninetieth Judicial District, our DA, and Lexus Nexus. Do we have a motion to ratify the executed agreement?
A move.
A motion for Commissioner Crestwell, do we have a second? Second from Commissioner Shook, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. We already did item number twenty, which was the end dump trailer bids, so we'll move to number twenty-one, discuss and consider an application to install an entry culvert in the County Road Right Away ditch line for Scobie Road, presented by Commissioner Craig.
Mr. John Horrigan's purchased forty acres on South Side, Little B Road, contact to be out, uh, between, uh, entrance culvert end. I went with the, the location, determined indeed a twenty-four inch, about thirty foot culvert, which he has purchased and has delivered. Uh, we need to second this application.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Craig, is there a second?
Is there?
There's a second from Commissioner Crestwell. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Item number twenty-two, twenty-two, discuss and consider burn ban restrictions. Any reason to, uh, change? Well, right now, we're not in a burn ban. Uh, we did hear a little bit of rain, are we still comfortable being?
Do we need to do anything else? We got these information posted out.
And I took us out on Monday, I'm sorry, I should, I should have left it back, but on Monday, I, uh, well, over the weekend, I consulted with all of our, um, volunteer fire chiefs, Jared Cook with the Texas Division of Emergency Management, the Sheriff's Office. I also have the Alney EMC on that group, and the Graham, City Graham EMC on that group. And, um, they unanimously recommended that we remove the burn ban, so I executed the authority that y'all have given me and took us out of a burn ban on Monday.
I'd like to make the motion that we leave Judge Graham's decision in place.
No, uh, no motion needed, but, but thank you for putting me on the hook. The capacity gets, thank you, that would be my fault.
I'm sorry, I should have done it that way.
No, it's fine, it's fine, but does anyone think that we need to consider going back into a burn ban?
No.
No action taken. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion for Commissioner Wiley, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Crestwell, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned, five oh.
That was my reference.
We made some progress, I mean, that was a, with, with public.